Four million.
There is one truck in front of me and one behind me.
This time I'll call the meeting in the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. Yeah. First item on our agenda is to consider the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting and the work session. Both of those meetings were held on February 8th. The council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note at this time? If not.
Motion to approve the minutes, both meetings.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote.
Mr. Mayor, can you do a voice vote?
A voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Kyle, are we gonna voice vote all evening or?
No.
Okay.
Mine just wasn't up.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Two. This is the award of bids, or consider the award of bids for chip sealing on various city streets. We have a resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. I'll call on Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer, to present this agenda item. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive five bids on February 16th for the annual seal coating project. The apparent low bid was from Pearson Brothers of Hanover, Minnesota, in the amount of $222,455.10. Our 2022 project budget includes $210,581 for this project. Staff would propose to eliminate one of the routes on our list to ensure that we can complete the project under budget. At this time, we believe by removing Jewett Street, we can come in under budget, and I think that's the direction we'll head. Staff would recommend to award to Pearson Brothers for an amount not to exceed $210,581.
Okay. Questions for Jason?
Jason, just a question on Southview Drive. Is our pedestrian crossing going to interfere with that work, or will the work be done prior or after, or?
It's a good question. Highly likely that this project will occur first, and then we'll come out and tear out some of that pavement. It'll be the easiest way to do it, to be honest. And we also want to get in there and make a couple minor adjustments to the striping anyhow. So I think it just, it'll be okay. The steel coating project is really low cost. We're not quote throwing away a lot of money by doing that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? If not, I would entertain a motion on the
Move.
Motion by Russ.
Second.
By Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And a motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Three. This is the Halber Road Reconstruction Project. We have a resolution that would declare the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of tax exempt bonds. And then following that, we would have the resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. This project is the complete reconstruction of Halber Road, including replacement of sanitary sewer and storm sewer piping. Minor water work on this project. On February 16th, we received four bids. The low bid was from Dunick, Inc. of Prinsburg, Minnesota, in the amount of $1,142,972. This amount is just below our engineer's estimate for the project. The estimated total cost, including 5% allowance for contingency and 16% for engineering and administrative costs, is just below 1.4 million. All improvements would be assessed according to our current special assessment policy, and staff would recommend to award to Dunick, Inc.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Questions?
Jason, what percentage of this do you think will be actually done with Cooperative with MMU for their work?
That's a question that I don't think I have an answer to tonight. Pretty low, because we're only, the water main there is a newer vintage PVC pipe. We've elected to not replace that in cooperation with MMU. Of course, we always talk that over with them. We're just going to be adding a few service lines, minor things. So I, small amounts, under 5%.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? If not, you have the recommendation.
Make a motion to approve the resolution declaring official intent regarding reimbursement of expenditures.
Right, John, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, if there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Now, the resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract is before the council?
I move the resolution.
Most by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
Yeah, and I just want to say before we vote on this, you know, when we had the, the meeting with this, I sat in on it with all of the affected property owners, and there was a little bit of discussion and some resistance, but the probably the largest, the person that was going to face the largest assessment had the strongest support. And, and I think when people left the room, there's, I was surprised. I really anticipated there to be a lot more resistance to the project or more questioning. And I think there's a lot of support for it, and I think there's acceptance of the necessity of the improvement. And I really appreciate the work that, that Jason and Jesse did on redesigning the street to narrow it up and still figure out all the driveway access approaches and the radiuses, because like at the cold storage unit now that's Turkey Valley, they have to back in there from the street, and some of the trucks are pretty long. So they actually sit out in the street a little bit when they're backed into the dock with the semi-tractors hooked up. And they gave a lot of consideration to that, and I think the people really appreciated the fact that we're not just throwing a drawing at it, that there was a lot of thought and trying to be practical with it and still giving them a good product. So I just want to put that out there. I really appreciate the work that our engineering department did on this and the job they did to present it to the property owners.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening would be the following items: the frontline warning system, that's the outdoor warning sirens, the contract for maintenance with the City of Marshall. Consider the authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property for the Marshall Police Department. The Block 11 redevelopment, the transfer of the land to the Housing Redevelopment Authority. Agenda Item Number Seven on the consent agenda is the school pedestrian crossing improvement projects. The resolution that would authorize entering into the MNDOT agreement for trunk, location on Trunk Highway 19, College Drive and Whitney Street. The, and then finally, on the consent agenda would be, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Most by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Nine. Consider the proposal from Butel-Mosing Land Surveying for the survey at the Marshall Flood Control Project. I'll call on Jason Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So Butel-Mosing has provided the proposal included in the packet for surveying services for determination and location of select property points of the flood control project, both the levee and the diversion channel, property easements. This survey would include setting pins where applicable, and then also just working with staff to identify points of interest where we would like either a pin or a marker to be set. Staff is proposing the survey to better identify to adjacent property owners, the actual locations of the flood control property. We believe that there's some, quite a bit of benefit of having a licensed land surveyor complete this work. It offers quite a bit of certain certitude and adds validity to the process to make sure that our work is defensible. I think down the road, we'd like to approach the council with maybe some, some posts and placards and get an approval for what that would look like to be set along certain locations here. But for now, we're just looking for approval of this agreement to work with Butel-Mosing to set various points and get electronic drawings submitted back to us so we can work on carrying this through. So along with this, we would likely send out notice to property owners that they'll see people around, they'll see things happening, and let them know what, what we're doing. So, is there any questions I can answer them? PIT Committee did hear this at January 25th, I believe it was, as well.
Any comments from the Public Improvement Transportation Committee?
Jason, you might just, for the listening public, you might just want to say something about if a shed is in the, in the city's property, what will be done? Or things like that, because there are a couple of instances, I think, right Craig, that we talked about, yeah?
Yeah, thanks, Councilman. So I'm open to council input, but you know, the major intent here is to make sure that we're not having future permanent structures placed on this property. If you look along the flood control property, in numerous locations, there are sheds, gardens, trailers, storage. Lot of instances where folks either don't know where their property starts and stops, or maybe once upon a time they did, and they're, and they're just kind of using the land. And I think we're okay with that. I don't think the city should have a problem with them. Most of these property owners maintain the property. They help the city out a lot by doing that, and we don't want to step on their toes for that. We appreciate that. But we really can't have permanent structures being continually constructed on that property, because it may impact the flood control project's ability to serve the entire community. It may be a detriment to that project. So we want to make sure we identify it. I'm okay if they're not permanent, and if a shed is, for example, isn't on a permanent foundation, things like that. If it can be moved, maybe that's something that we, we work with them a little more on. But I think just really identifying where that is and starting to set that boundary is the important thing. And if council has any alternative direction, I'm open to listen to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then like Ross said, we did, we actually did spend quite a bit of time talking about some of the, the specific places and how to deal with it. And the people that are using it are, you know, that are there, the adjoining property owners do a nice job of, of keeping that tidy back there. So I agree. I think that, you know, it seems to work. My concern would be to make sure that they understand, so that if we had to come in and do work and get in there, that there wasn't an expectation of damages for going in on areas that they're, that they're using, so that they understand what the, what the consideration and the use is, so.
Good. Anything else, Jason?
I would also just point out, and I don't know if our attorney has any advice on this, we haven't talked about this. I'm kind of putting him on the spot. But, you know, I think it is important that we do identify where our property is as well, so you don't let people have things on that property and maybe assume ownership and control of that down the road. I think it's really important that you, you identify where it is upfront.
Well, and the boundaries are irregular. I mean, they follow the river and setback from the river, so, so it's not always obvious where the line is.
Are there issues with trees at all? I mean, is there concern about?
Trees are always a concern. The Corps of Engineers used, they used to do an annual inspection of our project. They've since scaled that back to every five years now, so I actually don't know when they're coming again. But the last couple of years of the inspection program got pretty loose. We weren't getting the reports very timely. I think they're having staffing and money issues with the program. But they always flag trees, you know? We need to keep a 15-feet clear zone from the toe of the levee. And numerous, there's numerous instances where people plant things or construct things too close to the levee, and that's a problem.
Good. Any other questions? If not, you have the request.
I move that we approve the proposal from Butel-Mosing Land Survey for the flood control project property.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 10. Consider the resolution establishing and revoking some Minnesota state aid streets. This is kind of a housekeeping item, isn't it, Jason?
Yes, it is. This is a housekeeping item. You've got the map included in the packet. The short version of the story here is, we took a hard look at our system, and we wanted to ensure that we were allocating as many miles to our network as we could. We had over a mile, 1.13 miles, sitting in our bank and not allocated. So we gave our system a hard look, proposing a few revocations of routes, and then designating numerous routes to better utilize our opportunity to receive funding. So we're now down, if these changes are accepted, we'd be down to only 0.13 miles in our bank. This will open us up to receive more funding annually from the state aid system.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Questions? If not, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second.
Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? Hearing done, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number 11. Consider the acceptance of the Classification and Compensation Study Report by Gallagher Human Resources and the Compensation Consulting Practice, and approve the implementation for the non-union employees. So this was covered in detail at a previous work session. And I believe there also has been presentations to staff and employees already that has occurred to explain the comp study. So with us tonight, Sheila Dubs, Human Resources Director for the City of Marshall. You'll present this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just one correction to that. The employee meetings for this will be on Thursday.
Okay.
There will be two meetings for that. Those will be the final meetings. I'll just back up just a little bit. Last February, the council authorized staff to enter into an agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services to conduct this classification and compensation study. The study did include positions for the city, as well as the library and public housing. Included in your background materials this evening is a report from Gallagher on the process that they used for the study, which included development of a classification structure, a review of every job description using a job evaluation system called the Decision Band Method, a custom survey that was sent out to our comparator cities to collect compensation data using 33 benchmark positions, development of a salary structure, and finally, their findings and recommendations are included in that report. There were three primary goals for the study. That was to develop a compensation structure and supporting processes and policies that position the city to meet our hiring and retention needs, to develop a compensation structure that complies with Minnesota's Pay Equity Act and other state and federal laws, and to establish pay for employees that is competitive in the market where the city competes for talent. Overall, the findings of the study indicate that while current salaries are highly competitive, the city's current salary ranges are misaligned. Gallagher has created a proposed salary structure based on the following approach. They've recommended a 33% range spread between minimum and maximum pay. That is the same range that we have with our current schedule. They responded to the council's request for additional steps. The current structure has six steps. The proposed structure before you contains 10 steps. And they responded to the council's request for smaller increments between each step. Our current structure has approximately 5% in between each step. The proposed structure is approximately 3% between steps. We've had a very good relationship with Gallagher this past year, and they've been highly responsive to our questions and our needs. So tonight, staff are recommending that the council accept the Classification and Compensation Study Report as it's presented. And staff are recommending council approve implementation of the salary structure for the non-union employees as detailed in the background memo. With that, I'll turn it over to Sharon if she has any final comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Nope, I think Sheila covered it, so.
Thank you, Sheila. Open up for questions from the council. John?
Yeah, just, Sheila, you may want to take kind of a step back and go through our present pointing system and why, one of the reasons we wanted to get away from that.
Sure. Our present pointing system uses the Hay Point Factor method. That system has been in place with the city as far back as I can find records for. Unfortunately, finding consultants to continue to do that pointing work was becoming difficult. The consultant that we had been using recently for that became either no longer available or sporadically available. So when, when the council looked at the RFP proposals that came in for this study, there was one that, that would have performed the Hay Point Factor method. Unfortunately, it was cost prohibitive to hire that consultant. And Gallagher's was the, the RFP that was selected, and they offered the Decision Band Method. This particular method is used by other cities. It is a common method used by entities in Minnesota and nationally as well for industries that, that use a job evaluation method. I have seen other communities using that in our comparator group, so it's familiar, although I had no history with this particular method.
And then just in addition, they're not the only consulting group that uses this pointing method. So if ever need be in the future, we have the option of going to other consultants.
Thank you. Yes, that is true.
Thank you, Sheila. Other questions? Russ?
Sheila, first of all, I want to thank you for responding to my email. I had sent for council's information, I had sent Sheila an email over the weekend, and I asked her a couple of questions. And just, I wanted to know the top 10 positions, not as the individual, but to have the largest percentage of increase. And she gave me those, and I wanted to know the, the bottom 10 positions that had the smallest percentage of increase, and also those that, positions that were not going to get an increase whatsoever. So I'll refer to the 11 employees that were not going to get an increase at this present time if we adopt this, this study this evening. What I have a hard time with is that the 10 positions in the highest percent, we go from a 30.35 down to a 3.86% increase, and that percent does not include the cost of living increase. So I add another 3% to those numbers. So the, on the bottom of that scale, the position, that position is going to go to a Step A, which is the first step of the, of the chart, if I remember right. A 3.86% increase, but then we're going to give them a 3% COLA increase on top of that. Is that correct?
This data represents 2021 data. That is the data that Gallagher collected. So the survey data, the data reflected in the report reflects 2021 data. So yes, you are correct. It does not include a general rate increase.
So again, we're having, and again, some of these are part-time positions, but, I mean, we've got six employees in one area that are going to get a 23% increase in wages. Plus the 3%. On the lowest percent, because again, I wanted to know that, we're going to go from a .07 to a .70. Again, not including the 3%, correct?
Correct.
So just for the public's awareness, these are, you made reference in your comment to be competitive on a local level. I think we're very competitive on a local level. Finding the right candidate might be a little bit of a problem, as it's a problem probably for a lot of businesses in town. You know, it seems like we have a lot more jobs than we have people, even though we have, we've all heard the number 25,000 people coming into Marshall to work every day from various, you know, communities outside of Marshall. So I, I just struggle with these kind of percentages. I know we have to pay more. I know we have to be competitive. I know we, but at a typical getting into a Step A, we just, recently, we adopted the minimum wage increase by the state of Minnesota or federal government, January 1st. So right now, we're giving them another increase whenever we put in this into effect. What I have trouble with is that we're going to give them an increase, but are they still doing a good job? Do they still have a performance increase? So on, on one position here goes up 16.59%, during that person's evaluation, he, he or she could possibly move up a step or two based on their evaluation. Is that correct?
One step, correct.
One step.
If they're due a step increase this year.
If they're doing satisfactory, extraordinary work, whatever the case would be, they could possibly move up another step.
That's correct.
Okay. So, and again, I, I just wanted to share that information with, with the rest of the council. Again, we have 11 employees that are not going to get any, any increase, and based upon roughly Sharon and Sheila, 100 employees in the City of Marshall, roughly speaking, 90 of them are going to get an increase. My other question, during this study, and I probably should have asked it at the last meeting, was there any consideration to given to consolidation of, of jobs? As technology continues to improve and advance, I hope we have taken a look at every position. Do we need to keep the position full-time? Do we need, can we consolidate that position with another area? I bring up Sharon's Admin Assistant. You know, when that individual left, Sharon decided not to replace that position. A year later, two years later, three years later, we decided that Sharon decided that she needed a halftime person. So we consolidated another admin assistant with Sharon's admin assistant, which is a great thing to do. I just hope that we have looked at other areas, and look for consolidation as well.
Every time we have a vacancy, we do that analysis.
Okay.
There's, it's not an automatic hire.
Okay. Well, I just, and again, it's
Well, I think that
I think we talked about, excuse me, I think we talked about adding a street department employee during budgeting part. I probably am going to assume that we're not going to add the street department employee, because this is going to cost us, on this implementation, the number we have in front of us is about $93,000. And we budgeted for COLA, is that correct? So this is over and above COLA, so about $93,000 increase. But I, and I just wanted to bring the rest of the council to that, to those numbers, so.
And I think those are good points, Russ, and I think the key with this is, is that we're approving the implementation for non-union, which means that the rest of this is all part of union negotiations, so.
Correct.
I think a lot of those questions will get answered at that point.
And I think the other good point there was when positions come open, that they're always evaluated. And not, not only evaluated internally, but do we have the opportunity for even a partnership with another organization? Do we need an opportunity for even outsourcing, you know, and all those things are looked at in every position? Sharon, you got something?
Yeah. My admin assistant is at 25%, not 50%. I just wanted to clarify that, but I
Sorry.
That's okay. The, when I looked at the, the top 10 positions with the largest percentage of increase, it happens to be, most of them are at the lowest part of the scale, and they're the most hardest positions to fill. And we've been challenged in recent years with trying to fill them. I think a key term that Sheila used in her presentation was misalignment. If you look at the full, full perspective of the pay plan, we weren't too far off being competitive, but it was misaligned. And union negotiations, as Councilmember Schaefer pointed out, you know, we're subject to arbitration on LALS. We have been defeated. We have been defeated. Each year, we get into union negotiations because of really a misalignment with some of those folks in that particular union. It really challenges us to keep this internal consistency because competitively, at least for that union, we know where we're at. So there's a misalignment, and it needed to be realigned. Another key factor, two other ones, I'll just end on this. Cities compare to cities. We don't compare to counties. We don't compare to school districts. We did for some positions, community services, appraiser, assessor, those perspectives, just to get some comparable data. And why do we do that? When we are in arbitration, the arbitrator, so judge, said, "I agree with these cities that were chosen as comparables, so going forward, we really want to continue to use those same comparisons." And one other key factor, and I know this was presented in closed session, but as part of the report, and I think this is good for the public to know as well, we did increase the number of steps. It was a six-step pay plan. It's now going to 10. This is something we heard from council for, I don't know, four years plus, maybe eight. So I think that's a really key factor in this new pay plan. We are stretching out those steps based on a successful pay implementation, or, excuse me, job evaluation. Typically, too, on these evaluations, they're not looking at quantity. They're looking at the quality of the job. So technical aspects, education requirements, the quantity aspect that you mentioned, I think is a good thing to bring up. You know, is there something we can do with less? On a pointing system, they're not really, really looking at that. That's why when someone takes on additional responsibility, isn't about really how much more time it is. It's more about what is added to that job in terms of technical ability and that education background that gets looked at. So these are difficult. We have unions. We have pay equity. We have FLSA. And, you know, for some of those, there's a lot of entities privately, which I said earlier, we don't compare them. They don't have to deal with that. Those are difficult, difficult in terms of labor negotiations, pay and all that. And I think, you know, just taking that in, I know we still have some FLSA Fair Labor Standards Act questions to resolve yet. I think this is a good pay plan, and I think it meets the requests of the council, not only for meeting the policy that council has set on how often we're going to do this, but changing the number of steps. And hopefully, we'll be more successful with the union negotiations, not end up in arbitration and lose. So anyway, I probably said too much, but I just wanted to explain that a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. John, do you have something?
Just a couple of comments on that is, you know, kind of a little bit of going back into discussion about our older method of pointing versus this new method. We, with this method, we have, I would say, use the term, maybe some diversity in there because before, we were looking at one consultant, looking at it over a number of years, and not a lot of other. They had a method, but, you know, when there's only one or two people that are using that method, it's hard to get a good comparison. Now that we went to this newer option with Gallagher, to me, it's more of a, there's been more input into the actual pointing setup and how they generate the points and how they get their, come to the conclusion. I guess reality, I was, in one sense, not surprised that, you know, overall, we're very competitive, but when you get to some specific areas, we're not. And I think that's really what we're talking about in this area, where we've got some, and, you know, and honestly, that's the reason for doing the study, is to find those 20, 25, 30, 10 people, whatever it is, that are individually not competitive, and to bring those positions up to a competitive position. And, you know, primarily, should we keep the people? So that's the art of it, so.
Any other comments? Well, one last comment. Sheila, a lot of work has gone into this, a lot of time, you know, since February of last year, so thank you for your work on this, and then thank you for your continued work on, you know, the communication with all of our staff on this plan.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John, to accept the classification and compensation report and approve the implementation for the non-union employees. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 12. This is the Commission Board Liaison Reports. From my report, the Southwest Regional Development Commission did have their monthly meeting within, since our last meeting, continues to do a number of things, and then also included in that, I gave a report on a organization that we formalized in the region. I reported on this to the SRDC, the Southwest Minnesota Council of Mayors. This would be the mayors from, started with Worthington, Laverne, and Pipestone and Marshall, and then we've expanded it now to Jackson and Canby and Granite Falls. So we've been meeting about once a month, and are really, it's for advancing, advancing any implementation of things that we can be, do to be competitive economically with our neighboring states. One specific example of that is tuition incentive for targeted employees that would match a program that South Dakota has, for technical education for targeted occupations, where in exchange for receiving that tuition forgiveness, that that young person or that person who receives that education would stay in that region, in that occupation for a minimum of three years. That program's been quite successful in South Dakota, and, you know, that we're proposing to the legislature that that be extended to the programs where there is capacity in Minnesota West Community and Technical College, so it would certainly impact that region. That's the reason for expanding our group to include Jackson and Canby and Granite Falls and those communities that have campuses for the Technical College. We do have, received good reception from the legislature. Representative Hamilton and Senator Weber from Southwest Minnesota are, have agreed to sponsor this legislation. We see this going through the jobs bill, through the, through, under the, under deed. We also see the potential for that, the recipients of the funds, and the administration of the forgivable loans would either be Southwest Minnesota Initiative Fund, or if that was problematic, the city of Laverne has stepped up to, you know, to take that role on, so. We've also engaged the, kind of the assistance of a lobbyist from Flaherty and Hood, and not the same lobbyist that has been used for our sales tax issue, but one other different staff person. This person is Eric Sorensen, is a former legislature, legislator from northeastern Minnesota. So that's my report. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Southwest Amateur Sports Commission met, and I was unable to attend.
Steve?
EDA met. I was unable to attend. Cable Commission, Community Services did not meet.
John?
EDA did meet. We approved, I believe it was eight different facade improvement grant requests. I didn't get a total at this time of how many, but it's a considerable number of businesses down Main and side, Main areas, more of the main traveled areas that are going to have some improvement. And so it helps go in, and we also discussed a, another grant opportunity, putting an application for some Main Street revitalization programs. We're going to see where that goes. Utilities has not met. They'll be meeting Thursday night. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, one thing I would add, is on February 15th, we had our first World Cafe, and we did that in conjunction with the Cultures on the Prairie, which was about, I'm not sure on the number that were attended, but it had to be about 100 people that were attending that. So I thought it was a good representation. About 20, 25 of them were online or on Zoom, so it was a hybrid option. And from what I heard, we had some as far away as Chicago attending, so it was, gets to, it's getting out there quite well. But we did go through the discussions. A number of us were facilitators for several, nine questions that were asked of the, those attending, and had an opportunity to collect that data and get back to, get that compiled, and it's going to be brought back to the DEI committee when our consultant gets through with that, so. I thought Cultures on the Prairie really ended up very nice after having that. It's a good program. Recommend in the future, just trying to make those. It's, my time's up. Okay.
Is it time to leave, John?
I didn't know. I didn't know your time.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Russ?
Adult Community Center has not met convention and Visitors Bureau or Visit Marshall. Did meet. We continue to receive applications for the community support grants, and we continue to grant those. Couple of new things that they are looking at is a youth sports and activity expo, and I apologize to the listening public and council, I forgot to write down the date on that, but that's going to be in the spring. And for the ever-popular craft beer show, they're bringing that back. That'll be on May 14th, and we actually pay to have the craft beer vendors come to Marshall, and then we sell tickets. So it's a very well-attended event. The library board did meet. They're looking at if things don't change with COVID, and we continue to hear that things are spiraling downwards with that, so that they're opening up the study rooms by month-end. They made a presentation to the county for some technology. I haven't heard if that went through. And the visits continue to go up. January was up over 2021 and slowly, slowly getting back to normal, so we're starting to see some more people going into the library. Community Transit did meet. I did not make it to that meeting. I had a wrong time scheduled in my calendar, but one of the things, and I don't know, Jason, if Jesse told you, they have federal funding or state funding or something that they're going to put up 19 more bus drop, cubicles, I don't know what else to call them, around town.
Bus shelters.
Yeah, shelters. There we go, yeah. So they're going to have, they end up, they're putting up 19 more. They'll have 23 in town. Is that correct? Is that the number?
Yes, and just as a reminder for council, we are partnering with them on that. We're administering that project on their behalf. Jesse's put a lot of work into it. That's, anytime you get into these grant projects, it just piles up the paperwork, but working hard to get that ready to go.
Yeah. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Russ, I'm certain you're in.
One of the things I want to bring up, and I heard and seeing Doc here, I respect Doc. Thank him for calling me. I have had about maybe three or four calls and maybe a couple emails regarding the removal of the stoplight at Third Street. Everyone have been against it. They're saying, if Marshall puts so much emphasis on safety, why are they even recommending or thinking about removing that signal light? They've said, you know, if a semi-trailer starts at Fifth Street down there and was lucky enough to hit the green light on Fourth Street, that they're going to run right through, and yet we still have pedestrians trying to cross on Third Street to shop on the other side, on both sides of the street. So everybody that I've talked to, Jason, and for the rest of the council, I don't know if you've had people call you, but everybody that I've talked to is against removing the signal light. I've asked them about the one way on Third Street, and they said, "That's six of one, half dozen the other," but the overwhelming opinion is that they want to leave that signal light there. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And just to clarify, Jason, the, there's been no recommendation to remove that. The only recommendation is to, is to study how Third Street would look under reconstruction. When we know it has to be reconstructed, should it look exactly like it is right now, or should it look differently? And that was the request of the primary property, adjacent property owner, correct?
That is correct, and I was going to give the council a quick update on that RFP in a little bit here as well, and just that it's out, and we can talk about it a little more, too.
Very good. John, or Russ, do you have anything more?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
No, I think I'll pass. Craig?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, I sat down with the mayor and with the director of the chamber, and we talked about our boards and commissions and the difficulties in getting people to apply for the boards and commissions, and are we, do we, are we asking for the right representation? And based on, some of the commissions and their activities support more than people that are just residents of Marshall. And so the thought was, is that would it be wise to open it up a little bit more to maybe people that have a Marshall zip code mailing address or something like that? The Community Services Advisory Board is kind of a good example of doing it more of the geography of service, and that kind of, I believe, uses the school district to qualify for being on that advisory board. Couple that I can think of that might be wise to open up, one would be the Airports Commission, and a second one would probably be the Adult Community Center. If we're having trouble filling slots, maybe we need to look at what that makeup is. So my suggestion or preference would be that we put this to the Legislative Inordinance Committee to take a look at it and just see what they think. I don't think any of the ones that we're looking at have to do with, that we would have to go into the charter. I wouldn't, I mean, if we do, if there's some that we want to do, then that would have to go to the Charter Commission, but I think the ones initially that we're looking at would be able to be done by the Legislative Inordinance Committee. So that's really all I have, but I, and I think it'd be good to do this. I think there's some good reason. I've kind of been, it's been something I've thought about since I've come on the council, is that I think we need to open a few of these up because I think they're, we're shorting the commissions a little bit by not allowing some very qualified people that would be more than happy to go on and would contribute well. So I just, I think we should really take a look at it. And then on what Russ brought up, I also had a couple of phone calls and a personal contact with the same, exact same representation, excited about us looking at things to enhance the feel of the community and especially of our downtown businesses and the comfort of having people visit and have it be kind of a welcoming destination, but absolutely concerned about how traffic crosses on the Main Street. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Greg. And I was part of that discussion and in supportive of what you're suggesting with the Adult Community Center and Airport Commission. The, looked at, you know, a number of other cities that have like one spot that is available for a non-resident of the city. I think that might be, makes sense. And then, of course, there's other boards and commissions that either are controlled by the charter, utilities would be a good example of that, or that simply wouldn't make sense, you know, like Planning Commission.
Right. Police Commission.
Right. Yeah. So thank you.
Yep.
Steve?
I got the same calls that everybody did on the traffic lights, so I think we're kind of getting the similar pushback for that. I have nothing else.
Okay. We'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. I don't know if Kyle can pull this up. I did send an email late this afternoon about the City Hall Plaza, so the space between Mainstay and City Hall. This conceptual design was actually shared earlier, probably a couple of months ago with council, just saying this is, you know, the direction we're going to go. And we did use the initial Ingen. use the initial Ingham conceptual design, but needed a little more detail for Preston Stensrude and his staff to actually go forth and implement it. And so this was what was provided to us. One of the thoughts we had, and this is where I wanted feedback from the council, is do you want to call it City Hall Plaza? We, we have a plaza at Red Baron and I might be missing another plaza somewhere. Would you like to get input from the public on naming? I know that some other, my understanding, there's some other parks where we did accept naming from the public, kind of ranked them and had the council give the final decision. So I just want to ask you, would you like to have public input or would you want to have it called City Hall Plaza? So I hope I'm not springing this on you. And if you don't want to respond, you can certainly think about it and give me an email or talk to me afterwards as well. So.
How about the Hotel Memorial Plaza?
Anyone object to getting public input on what it would be called?
No.
No.
I think it'd be a good idea. Yeah. Good.
All right. We'll proceed then. So, and then real quick, I don't want to keep you longer than you need to be here, but we are continuing to work on the sales tax legislation. We did notify the appropriate committee chairs by January 31st. And Marty Seifert has been doing a really great job connecting with Senator Dames and Representative Swedinsky. The indoor rec center at this point is not in the proposed legislation that Senator Dames has listed. They just want more data and information. They feel, at least Senator Dames feels really good about the aquatic center. We have to give Representative Swedinsky some additional information and hopefully we get some kind of proposed legislation from him as well. But a lot of back and forth. And I know we had Scott Vandermelon and Jason Anderson and the mayor today talking to, to our lobbyists. So if you had any questions, please let me know. But that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
You might add that the, the first hearing on all 16 possible sales tax requests from 16 different communities, there's two counties involved in that, the, that is on March 9th. So the bills really have to be introduced probably by the end of this week, right?
I think we were thinking the end of next week, but you know, time flies. So.
Right. Yeah. Good. Any questions for Sharon? If not, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick update on the comprehensive plan process. The survey is officially closed. We've had over 600 responses, which is excellent. You know, I think SRF really targeted between 200 and 300 is, is a good number. And we had over 600. So that's great. Recently had the open house last week. Many of you were there. Thanks for coming. Pretty sparsely attended, but we're just going to say that we did such a good job of reaching people with the online survey that they decided they didn't need to come. Small group meetings also occurred last week with different interest groups. You know, there was a housing group, an SMSU group, a business group. Really great turnout there. All of that's a testament to Lauren Deitz's work. She did a really great job of rounding these groups together and, and making that work. So thanks to her. Tiger Lake SCADA project is now complete. I don't know if anybody remembers, it's been so long, but last year, at one point, when we didn't spend all of the money on the core project that we were going to originally, we repurposed just under 30,000 of those dollars to do some SCADA improvements at Tiger Lake. That's now done. Our wastewater staff now has mobile control and mobile reviewing ability of those pumps and the, and the levels in that lift station. And that's, that's really important and it's an important tool, especially when it's raining. So we're happy to have that done. Lastly, the Third and Lion RFP. I was going to just update the council and let them know that Jesse got those sent out. Last week, we've had tremendous response from engineering firms. I think we're going to get a lot of proposals. I did talk with Sharon about how we would grade those. I think we'd like to use the PIT committee to help us review those proposals and help us score them. I've also asked Brad Grewout to join us in, in scoring them. And I'll, if there's any other input on that, I'm, I'm open ears. But when they come in, I'll just get them emailed out to everybody and start reviewing. And hopefully we can make a tight timeline and on March 8th, the, our next council, our next council meeting, we can have those reviewed, rated and recommended for the evening meeting. That would be my hope. Now, what we're reviewing, we've, we've solicited proposals that cover a few different topics. One, related to the traffic signal is an intersection control evaluation. That's not a movement of the city to do anything other than review the data, count the traffic, check for pedestrian numbers, just do a data review. I know that winter time's not a high pedestrian use number, but that's not going to be a driver at this location. For, for pedestrian numbers to justify a traffic signal in the traffic engineering world, you would, it would take a pretty high demand and we're not going to see it any time of the year. So studying the, the vehicles and giving us some sort of comprehensive evaluation of that signal is what we're after. I'll remind the council, as the mayor pointed out, we were approached by a majority property owner on, on a block of the project to review these things. And that's what initiated the conversation. And, you know, city staff has talked to the Downtown Business Association two or three times. We have talked to some property owners and we just got to the point, and council committee. And while we got good feedback, we just got to the point where we said, we do need to, in our minds, hire somebody and take this a step further, do some more evaluation of things. So we can really help make the best case that we can to the public for what's going on there and what that area could be. You know, I'll be honest, this project's been on the capital improvement plan since before I got here. Its project number in our system well precedes when I started. This has been on the agenda for a long time. And there's been numerous reasons why it's been kind of pushed a year, pushed a year, pushed a year. But, you know, I can tell you, for me, one of the reasons why it's been pushed is it's a big impact project, right? And there's a lot of things to take into consideration. The type of stuff that we're trying to bring in some help to look at, the traffic signal, the downtown aesthetics. The last thing I would want to do is bring a project through, get it done and have it completed. And the sidewalk looks great. The street looks great. The utilities are all replaced. But everybody looks at it and says, maybe you should have done something a little different. You know, maybe you should have looked at this aesthetically here. Maybe you should have done something there. And I think that we need this consultant, in my opinion, to help us explore options with their experience on these projects, explore costs, and just have a better conversation than I think our office can provide on these topics. So that's a long-winded conversation that I just had there, one-way conversation. But I'm, I'm open to questions and input always, but I just want some comprehensive talk on that, that this didn't just kind of come out of nowhere. I know it happened fast because it did. But we've been thinking about this for a long time. The proposals will have a, an intersection control evaluation and then a downtown aesthetic kind of scoping cost separated by tasks and a detailed design for the streetscaping cost and then a cost for actually designing the whole project, just to see what the number is. So we can à la carte, pick and play on that. Staff will be happy to help council walk through that as we do the rating. But it's, it's a big project and it's a big opportunity. And we just wanted to make sure that we gave it the right amount of consideration from our perspective. And of course, the council, you, as council, you hold the ultimate decisions and, and we're all ears. If you tell us you want to go down any path, we're, we're ready to go. So.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason?
Yeah. Just maybe just a little bit of the timing on like, say, the primarily the parking lot down on the corner over here, across from the theater as well as Lion Street. So yeah, how are all those going to mesh in together a little bit? What kind of is the timing on those?
So right now, we have two of the parking lots in the capital improvement plan for this construction season in 2022. The movie theater lot is currently in that plan as well as the thought behind the, the nickel. The nickel lot shouldn't be a problem from my perspective to get that designed and bid this year. We haven't quite got to it, haven't quite gotten to it because we're working on other, other things. But the movie theater lot will be a little bit of a challenge to get designed this year. There's numerous considerations there that we have to mess around with, but we're still going to try to bring a project forward for council to consider this year. If not, if we need to put it together with the project next year, we can do that, too. That we would just need some phasing. So something's open when something's closed. We want to make sure that people can get to their businesses.
Yeah. It's kind of bigger concern. You start looking at what we're all going to do. Third Street, we start pretty well on closing in a number of businesses with, you know, surround them anyway with constructions.
Good point. Any other question for Jason? Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And you throw in the Block 11 development. You kind of want to tie them all together in my mind as well. And that's, that's a big project that's taken up a lot of attorney time and staff time developing the contract for private development. However, everything will be phased over the next few years regarding that project. Helena, the Minnesota Department of Agriculture has issued their response to the proposed cleanup. They want more excavation and they have identified 12 additional specialty pesticides that they need more information on. Department of Ag has given Helena two different options. You can continue under the agriculture, the VIC program, the voluntary program, and keep working with our staff to get that done. Or if you want us to issue a limited no further action letter, we'll give you that and then we'll put you into the comprehensive cleanup program and we'll take over and we'll get it done and bill you. So that decision as to continue or to go to the comprehensive cleanup, that decision by Helena needs to be in by next Friday, March 4th, and we'll see where they go.
The additional sites for exploration, is that under, and cleanup, is that underneath the existing building?
It is not. I, when I looked at all of those, there's 10 sample locations within the building right now. They did not address or find any problems with those. It is behind the, it's behind that building and by the spur line railroad tracks. I think they want further explanation. They may, exploration, pardon me, or they, and they may also want those tracks removed. And as I'm talking to council member Schaefer, as long as we, as long as the switch is in place, that's the key element to be allowed for further spur if we want the spur line, correct?
That's correct. And the, and the switch is part of the property.
Yeah. So that's Helena, Broadmoor Valley. Of course, we've always got things going there. We are waiting for, we should receive it next, no, the end of this week, I believe, the Minnesota Housing Grant document, which will determine what the grant, the $500,000 grant money can be used for. And I'm also waiting for an analysis. Mr. Scherholz has hired an engineer to give him a cost estimate for repairing the homes instead of removing the homes. I think there's going to be a pinch point pretty soon. I think the engineering fee is going to be more than it would cost him to remove them. And so we're waiting for that analysis to come in. And I recently attended the League of Minnesota Cities Attorney Conference and it was completely different conference this year than in the past. Usually that, you know, it's very technical. What are you doing with special assessments, annexation, you know, legal stuff. And this year, the George Floyd incident, the Kim Potter incident have completely changed the way councils and city attorneys act. And they, they had one presentation involved a discussion. It started out as an open public forum discussion at the City of Bloomington Council Meeting that turned into chaos. The, the, the crowd was standing just on the opposite side. I mean, right in the faces of the council members yelling at them. Council members evacuated chambers for two hours and basically hid at someplace else within the building. Two hours later, they came back thinking everything would be over and it started again. City Council in Bloomington now sits behind bulletproof glass. They have a large area roped off in front. You cannot enter that area. There are police presence at every meeting. And it was, they, they said you need, that, that my take out of this meeting is you need some type of an emergency response plan for how council acts. How do you can continue to tuck, conduct business during those settings? Now, we, we've addressed that after the flooding situations. We know how to conduct city business after a natural disaster. But how do you do it during an insurrection? You know, with everything else that's going on, how do you continue to conduct business that needs to be done? There was a presentation from one council member from that meeting. After the meeting, there was individual targeted picketing that went on at each of the council members' houses. People would come in, they would block the streets. So you could not get emergency or law enforcement people in to that residential area. And there's picketing with guns and bullhorns were present at the council members' homes.
That happened in Hugo also.
Yeah, this was, yeah, the presentation was from Bloomington, but you're right, it's more than just that one incidental city. And they talked about changes to their charters, their ordinances. How do you control picketing? Just thought for future, you know, I, I'm thinking myself, oh, this is Marshall. We don't have to worry about that. And then I see the headline the next day, active shooter threat at high school. And how do, you know, yes, it is something that we do need to address. How do we continue operating in these situations or be prepared for that situation? How do you do that?
Thank you, Dennis. We'll move on then to...
Mr. Marshall will be talking.
The, we'll move on then to the remaining items on our agenda this evening, including the information items and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there any other item to come forward this evening?
I think we adjourn.
Most by Craig, seconded by Steve to adjourn. Discussion. There's no discussion. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Motion passes. We are adjourned.